This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Five. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Counselors and participants in this meeting are gathered hybrid on the order extended until March 2025 allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to quarter. Mary Ann.
Connie Denham. Here. Salem Derby.
Present.
Felicia Jatsik.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell.
Here.
And now we will take a short moment of silence. And please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I commit to working toward.
And we have two sets of minutes here, one from January 50th and January 22nd. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
All right.
I make a motion to amend.
Okay, so we just need to get the first motion on and then, so let's get a second for that. Okay, we have a motion in a second and then it sounds like we have a motion to amend.
Motion to amend the minutes, the January 22nd minutes.
Okay.
In the first line, just would like to offer a correction to my last name.
Okay.
There's a C missing.
Okay, so add a C on the first line.
For members present.
And so that's in the form of a motion, so I would take a second to amend. Okay, we have a motion in a second. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh wait, we should, we forget that we have two remote members, so we're gonna have to roll call this. Sorry, Mary Ann.
Connie Denham. Aye. Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jatsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Okay, the amendment passes and now we have the original motion. So any further discussion on the original motion? As amended, seeing none?
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry. Just tell me what we're voting for right now.
So right now, we're voting on the amended minutes with the correction adding a C.
Okay. I have one more amendment I would like to see drawn.
Okay.
Can I introduce that at this time or is it too late?
Nope, you can do that. This is the time to do that.
I do not have my glasses on, but in the...
So am I.
Oh, I'm, I just, no, I just see that it was amended, that there's no actual address for public speakers and I just wanted to make sure that was amended in the record. So, thank you.
All right, so we have the original motion as amended. Mary Ann.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jatsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
And motion passes. Thank you. And so now we have the opportunity for the public comment. And, oh, sorry Connie.
Yeah, yeah, you didn't say my name, so I also agree to it.
Oh, so...
Pardon me, I was trying to do the direction. Okay, thank you.
So now we have councillor Denham's vote correctly recorded and the motion passes. Thanks councillor Denham. So, public comment, and this is your opportunity to address the council regarding any topic not listed under the public hearings. Please address the council. And a new thing that we are just trying to get across the board is we're asking people to give, you don't have to give us your actual address, just give your street address.
Three minutes, counting down.
And you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Eric Pullen. I live on Parsons Street. Welcome to the council. I'm very happy that you're representing us in precinct two. I'm here tonight to hold space for councillor Smith. At the meeting on January 22nd, for the last city council meeting, councillor Smith correctly acknowledged that some missteps were taken during the appointment process during this past December. I think that this shows great humility on councillor Smith's part, great leadership, and a growth mindset, all of which are, I believe, essential qualities that any elected official on local, municipal, federal level should have. So I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that, to express my appreciation for you, and to express that you have my respect and support moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on any issues that are not on the public hearings? And if you're online, you can raise your virtual hand. Okay. Oh yeah, absolutely. So we're gonna do the people that are in the building first and then we'll go to online, so please.
I'm Marvin Ward. I live in the city cottage suite, status of the old factory building. And I'm here because we have had, my mayor and myself, an idea that we should have a citywide straight speed limit. And I've pawned back in, okay, that was two, three, four months ago, in August, I think. It's on my paper there. And I came in last week because I was told, or last month, last meeting, because I was told that we were going to discuss it from the previous week. But we didn't. And now, last week, they said we were discarding it today. Well, he's, but I understand that the guy who was the chair of the committee has resigned. So I'm a little worried about when we're ever going to get it. I live here on this street, right here, and I see cars and trucks going 40, 45 miles an hour all the time, from my windows I see it. I don't have to go out to look. And I really don't like it. We already have had some decent people killed there, and I'm afraid we're gonna have another one. I don't want to be the one, but anyway, I, you know. So I would like to see it got on the main thing and distributed and a decision made because it is not any difficult decision. Okay.
Okay, and before I take the next one, just as a point of information, we do have a public hearing coming up for that item on February 19th.
February 19th?
Yep, at 6:15.
I will be there.
Okay, so let me see.
I'll stay here tonight, too.
Welcome to. Do we have any virtual hands? Oh, okay. Julie, and Julie, I don't know if you heard, but we're asking people to give, just for the sake of the minutes, we're asking people to give their street address. Then you don't have to give your actual address, just so it's consistent across every participant.
Okay, oh, can we give the precinct?
So we're asking people to actually just give their street address as opposed to the precinct, yeah.
Okay, so six, I'm on Concord. I just, Julie from Concord, I have a couple of brief things just to mention, just very quickly. First, I just wanted to say I'm very saddened about the resignation of councillor Owen Zerret. He certainly was a voice of his constituents and his positive impact to our committee will be greatly missed. I don't blame him for resigning. I think the last city council meeting was extremely toxic and a malicious targeted attack and even from a sitting city councillor. I think that the school committee should be investigated as they certainly went beyond their complaint of his persistence in getting answers and literally attacked him. Secondly, I understand that the city council is going to be voting tonight for a president and I just, and I don't know if you can answer this question, but I didn't see any names on an agenda. So I didn't know, is it just everybody is in the pool for that or does people have to put their names in to be the president of the city council? Can you answer that for me?
I think I can just give some information, which is the rules of the city council state, anybody can be nominated.
Okay, so it's just like a nomination. Okay, I just didn't know that process, so I was just curious about it. So I will say this, from the last meeting, a lot of people wanted a female as the president for the city councillor. I will say this, as a woman, I will say that gender has absolutely nothing to do with selecting the best individual for that position. I think in my eyes, selecting that best person for the job should be based solely on the qualifications and abilities. And choosing a leader based on gender can be a factor and unconscious bias, leading to overlooking the most qualified candidate, whether male or female. We need a leader who can effectively communicate, who can make decisions that are unbiased, who can actually build a cohesive team that serves our community. They cannot allow their emotions to define their decision making. This is counterproductive and most certainly can lead to biased decisions. So I'm asking that when you do choose who is going to be president, please ensure it's not due to gender, but because the person you choose is actually most qualified. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, looks like we don't have anybody else, so we can move on. We still have about four minutes before our public hearings, so I think we might be able to do, we do have no items for immediate action, we have communications from elected boards of officials, we do have councillor Zerret's letter of recommendation, which was submitted to me. What's that?
Resignation.
Resignation. Oh, resignation, sorry. Which was submitted to me on February 4th and I forwarded it to the clerk and has been accepted. And I do have just a quick statement about that. So first and foremost, I want to take a moment to express my best wishes to councillor Zerret for his service to our city, his dedication, hard work, and contributions to East Hampton have made a meaningful impact and we appreciate the time and energy he has devoted to this community. Public service is not easy and it requires a deep commitment to our shared values. I'm sure the next chapter will bring him new passions and a place to focus his energy. His resignation presents complex challenges that this council will need to navigate with careful consideration. We are committed to addressing these matters in consultation with the school committee and our school, and our city solicitor, ensuring that we uphold both integrity of this body and the trust of the public while attempting to minimize misinformation and accusations. As we move forward, it is essential that we remember why we are here. We are not here for ourselves. We are here for the people of East Hampton. Our responsibility is to work together, to listen and to find solutions to the challenges before us. This is not a time for division. It's a time for unity, honesty, and integrity. Our city is facing real and pressing issues, affordable housing, the launch of major development projects, the ongoing need to support our small businesses, and the broader difficulties of an increasingly tense national political climate. These are not simple problems and they will not be solved by one voice or one perspective alone. They require collaboration, transparency, and a willingness to seek common ground. The strength of East Hampton has always been its people, our resilience, our passion, our commitment to progress. But we cannot move forward if we allow personal agendas or disagreements to overshadow our shared mission. When we enter this chamber, we must leave those agendas at the door and focus on what truly matters, the well-being of our city and its future. Tonight, let us recommit ourselves to the work ahead. Let us be honest in our discussions, act with integrity in our decisions, and embrace the spirit of cooperation. East Hampton deserves nothing less. So I think that that brings us into our public hearing. So I guess we have pretty good timing. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Mary Ann.
Felicia Jatsik.
Sorry, what is, what are we?
Just open public hearing.
Yes.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham. Aye. Salem Derby.
Aye. And so we got everybody? Public hearing's open. And I will turn this over to councillor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items tonight for your finance. The first one is an interdepartmental transfer of $20,000 from the reserve fund to salary. This is to fund the salary for a sustainability coordinator position at 34 hours per week for the remainder of fiscal year 2025. As many of you may remember, we voted on an ordinance to approve this position in the fall. There was some back and forth about what department this position should ultimately be in, whether it should be in planning or DPW. So the position will fall within DPW just because of a lot of the energy stuff. It just, they thought that that made the most sense. And now, we, I think, I believe there is a pending offer, but we need to actually fund the position. So this, the $20,000 would fund the position through the remainder of the fiscal year and then in remaining fiscal years, or in future fiscal years, it would be part of the budget. So not a whole lot else to say there. I think we all voted for this when to make the position, so now we need to pay for it.
Okay. Any councillors have any questions? Okay. Does anybody from the public like to make a comment or have a question on this? Oh, mayor, please.
Yep, thank you to the city council for the support, but also I wanted to just take the opportunity to, one, thank our conservation agent, Eva, who filled the gap while we were getting ready to do this, and also our past conservation agent, Cassie Trager, who put together the climate action plan and really laid the groundwork for this position. It fills a part of our climate action plan, but also puts us in line to be a climate leadership community where allows us to apply for more grants. We anticipate within the budget, we will have this position in DPW with the expectation that some of it will be offset by green communities and climate leadership. But thank you for the support. Really important step forward for East Hampton.
Great. Thank you, mayor. It looks like we have our human resources director. Emily, did you want to add anything on this?
I think the mayor did a pretty good job of recapping, but yeah, we previously had had our conservation agent really filling the gaps with this position and, you know, it's kind of taken a life of its own and we're excited to see what we can do with it, so.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so unless there's any other comments, I will take a motion.
Sure. So I'll make this request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested is $20,000 to be transferred from reserve fund, $20,000, to be transferred to salary, $20,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: funding for the salary of the sustainability coordinator position at 34 hours per week for the remainder of fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We have any further discussion? Seeing none? Mary Ann?
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jatsik.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councillor Peak, looks like we have a supplemental motion appropriation.
We do. So the supplemental appropriation is from the Community Preservation Act. It is $100,000 to be appropriated from the CPA fund, undesignated fund balance, and to be appropriated to Tasty Top Affordable Housing. This would, I'm gonna probably end up turning this over to Eva at some point, but, but, but just the basics of it are, you know, that the, when developers go out for grants and, and tax credits and things like this, they, the granting agencies frequently like to see that the city has some sort of skin in the game. Up to this point, I don't believe that the Tasty Top project, we've appropriated money towards that project, but I guess that actually could be a impediment to getting some of the grants that could make this happen. So they had requested that we put something in and the $100,000, Eva can correct me on some of the details, but it does come in on a per unit basis, at a bit, quite a bit less than the other, than some of the other affordable housing projects that we funded through CPA, so that's a plus. I will say that the Finance Committee voted to bring this to the full council without, without a recommendation. The main reason for that is that there was some scheduling snafus last week and as a result, neither our CPA sort of coordinator or, or the developer were at the meeting. So there were, and while I sit on CPA, I was actually not at the meeting where, I had a professional commitment on the night that they voted on this. So there were a lot of questions floating around that nobody in the room was really equipped to answer. So we, we moved this to the full council and I believe that there's someone from the developer here and Eva's also here. And so I think at this point, I'd just turn it over if you're okay doing that.
Yep.
Yeah, so the CPA committee voted to appropriate the $100,000 unanimously and this is for phase one. The applicant did make it clear that they would likely be coming back for future phases of Tasty Top, of the affordable housing at Tasty Top. But this is for 36 units in phase one, which my understanding is that phase one is 37 units. So the affordable housing is designed to be built first under this current proposal. And we were presented at CPA committee with the project budget showing an $18 million budget. So $100,000, you know, is a very small fraction of that. And just a notable piece from the CPA committee's discussion on this issue was of former CPA committee member Jess Allen spoke in strong favor of it as an affordable housing person in her professional life, just noting, like councillor Peak noted, the local commitment being so important to matching the state funds. But I do also believe we have someone from the developer team to speak to this, so.
Okay. And is that maybe Peter?
That's right. Yeah, I, I, and I was, heard that there was a meeting, the original meeting at the CPA, there was a snafu where we weren't there, but we did, we were present for a presentation at the meeting with which the CPA voted. I wasn't sure if that was clear, or if it was another meeting that we didn't know about. But, yeah, I mean, as far as, everybody just summarized it well, this is a super competitive process to get state funds to develop the affordable housing. And this commitment from the town is viewed really highly by the state. We also have sought, you know, support with, on the affordable units, where there is an opportunity for the building permit fees to be reduced for just the affordable units. So that's, that's another element that can help, you know, articulate the town's support of developing affordable housing in, in the area.
Great, thank you. Do any councillors have any questions at this point? Okay, councillor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple of questions. There seems to be some discrepancy between when you first proposed this, that you weren't going to be asking for funds from the city. So could you just, could you, I think I understand why, but could you just explain why it is that you are now coming to the city for city funds?
I don't, I don't have record, nor would I have advised the owner developer to say that. So I personally don't have records of saying that we wouldn't be looking for funds from the city. And so if that just, I can't really speak to it beyond that. But I can speak to this, the overarching need, as was articulated before, to have city and community support in the financial way to basically, it's more than checking the box because the city has been incredibly supportive of affordable housing through zoning processes and as the mayor has, you know, made it a huge part of our administration and as you all are, are realizing and seeing now is the, is the fruit of that labor, though not everybody agrees with it. The fact is, is there are some fantastic projects on the, on the pipeline and the pipeline for the state is incredibly competitive to get those state resources.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you. And then the next question that I have is, we're offering, we're contributing $100,000. Could you, for the community, just help us understand, what does that open up in terms of, our contribution is $100,000, but what, what is that opening up for you in terms of additional funds?
Sure, yeah, no, I, I can provide that. I apologize. I'm gonna just, I need to open a quick spreadsheet, but I can do that. So the development of the 36 units, which again, this is the first phase of the development, the, the state funds that this essentially opens up is applying for $3.2 million worth of what the state considers soft grant, or we call soft grants, which are only repayable when it's no longer affordable. So it's essentially money that secures the affordability. That's 3.2 million. It also allows us access to getting $13 million worth of state and federal tax credit equity. And so this is where these, all of the affordable housing in the country, for the most part, is public-private partnerships, where the very basics of it are, instead of a company who has a tax burden to send their money to Washington or to Beacon Hill, they put the money straight into the community, into housing, and in lieu of paying the taxes. So that, that's what the tax credit program does. And this, this competitive application allows a developer, for-profit or nonprofit, to secure that allocation, which turns into about $13.8 million.
Great, thank you.
It looks like we have a question from councillor Kuzinski.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the explanation about what the $100,000 leverages. I appreciate that very much. It also leads me to ask the following question, since there seemed to be some concern about whether the, there would be any funds, and you say that you would never advise an owner developer to say that because, well, gosh, how would you get the tax credits, et cetera, I imagine, if you didn't have public participation in the process? $100,000, 36, 36 units now, how many more units and how much more public funds are you thinking about?
Right, right. So it's a good, very good question. So one thing that I also, and I think Eva nailed it, but maybe the numbers I didn't hear correctly, the, the development was permitted with a requirement for 37 units of affordable housing out of 206, I believe. And what, what we are doing is, in this first phase, we're building 36 units, all will be affordable. And as long, you know, the plan is to, well, for sure, we have to develop the other unit, but the plan is to do another 36 or, or 45 unit phase with, with additional affordable housing. So the, the project total can be at, you know, theoretically over the course of the next 10-plus years, could develop as many as 200 total housing units. And what, as far as the requests to the CPA are, you know, while I, you know, to a And what, as far as the requests to the CPA are, you know, while I, you know, to a certain degree, this might set a precedent, $100,000 for 36 units, I would advise that we would seek what we either need or the equivalent, right? You know, the, you know, $100,000 per 36 units, or if the economy or things change and such that it could go up or down. I mean, we unfortunately are seeing construction costs continue to go up, but that would be to be determined.
Thank you.
Counselor Peak.
Thanks for all of that. One question I did have, because I remember you saying this at the CPA presentation, but I wouldn't mind if you restated it. What is the basis for the $100,000? Like, when this request came through, like, how did you get to the $100,000 number?
Right, right. I looked at the awards that were given to TCB and Home City, both groups that I've done work with in the past, and I wanted to make sure that we were asking for less per unit than they were. And I think that there was an averaging of around, you know, whether it was 12, $12,000 a unit or what have you, I came up with this as a six-figure amount, which shows earnest commitment for the city, for the state, to see a true commitment of funds and, but yet to do it at as reasonable a level as I thought was gonna pass muster with the state.
Okay.
Thank you, President. I just would like to go back to a previous point, if you don't mind, just to clarify for my understanding and for the community's understanding. So the $100,000, if I understand correctly, is for the 36 affordable units, and then that's out of a total of 37. So if you do come back to us asking for more funding in the future, it would just be for one additional unit, is that correct?
Well, so the intention has been to develop, and this kind of is a, there's an economic story here, right? Market rate housing in the community writ large is affordable, it's just we don't have enough, period, right? So if, without getting too complicated, you have, you can have a market rate situation where you've got luxury market rate and can charge lots of money for rent to high, you know, or wealthier folks, or you can charge what the market bears in this community, which qualifies as low income or tax credit eligible housing. So the word "low income" is really a misnomer, it really is workforce housing. So a long-winded way of saying, our plan is to continue to build qualified affordable housing, as defined by the state and the city, under 80% area median income, and that we would, we owe the city another one unit, but we intend to build dozens more of affordable units. And so again, would that mean we would look at, you know, if we're doing, say, a hundred-unit phase, would it be $100,000 or would it be 110 or 120? You know, it would be to be determined, I guess, through both community input and back and forth with where the CPA is and other demands that are on it, I would say.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So do you have any sense, even if it's a really broad range, of what you might be thinking of coming to us and asking for additional funding in the future?
No, and I think the, I'd say the safe bet from my earlier comment about a precedent is, I think it's a $2,800, a little under $2,800 a unit is what the current request is. And, you know, I think that that is a reasonable request to assume for a further unit that would be coming online as a baseline. Does that make sense? I mean, that's, it's a hard crystal ball to look at, but I, what we're saying is, is we're not looking to take any more than is needed, and, but the, but the future is unknown as far as many things, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other counselors that have questions? And Mayor, did you want to make a statement before I go online? Yep, please.
Just to clarify too, so the $100,000 that's before you tonight is actually a little lower of what we did, like, compared to the Ferry Street project. And one of the reasons is for that is we were able, the city was able to obtain an earmark from Congressman Neal's office for almost $900,000 to address the infrastructure that this project needs to address to get to the housing. So the city's contribution comes in a whole bunch of different ways. The state looks specifically for some CPA contribution because of the housing, the specific carve-out for housing going forward. And to Peter's point, future requests would be made in conjunction with the city because we have more state grants that are lined up for this project, including Mass Works, which we've already applied for once, and we're told, great application, but we need to come back with a timeline that's a little, we're closer than shovels in the ground. So what the future requests will be balanced with what other state, federal money we are able to get, and we have that in our pipeline of applications. As well, Mass DOT has some substantial work planned for that area that would help this project and others. That project's timeline, they're in design, but that could take years and not line up with this. So just for general information, the CPA amounts really, this is what the state and federal government likes to see to get to tax credits and whatnot. The next request will really be balanced with applications, grant applications, awards, and maybe some more federal money.
Mayor, just a quick question. Did that earmark, is that why we haven't seen a TIF?
Yeah, so the, yes, I meant, I should have mentioned that. The area of, because of the zoning in this area, and it's an opportunity zone, similar to Ferry Street, it is very desirable to do a TIF, which helps the back end of a project become affordable. We're, you know, everything's on the table to get housing in the city, but with the earmark upfront, we're holding on that, on the city and seeing the total package of funding and, and, you know, really trying to help this development to get that first building of affordable housing upfront.
Appreciate that, thank you. Any other questions before I go online? Okay, Kaia.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, counselors. I just, my name is Kaia Jermard McQuade, resident at Jones Drive, member of the East Hampton and Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. I just wanted to express my steadfast support for this project. I mean, I think we all know that we're in a deep housing crisis, and this money will help them address some of their costs. Like Peter mentioned, there's a lot of unknowns right now, like dental tariffs and lots of things that are causing, that are creating barriers for developers. So I think we, as a community, really need to support in this way. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Wiesinski, Overlook Drive. I wanted to ask that the council not approve this funding. I sat in on the original request for a comprehensive permit, and during that process, which was long and arduous, one of the things that the developer did say was that they weren't going to be applying for CPA funds, and that was supposed to be a selling point for us. I do not believe that the city should be helping this developer make profit. The majority of this development is a huge profit-making venture, and really the only affordable housing or low-income housing that this developer has to put in is these 36 units. That word salad that that developer's staff used really talked about the potential for more affordable housing, but the likelihood is it will be market rate, even if it is affordable. It may not be low income. This developer has proven time and time again in other communities that they don't follow the rules and they build to the lowest legal standard, and we end up with shoddy developments. And this development also is going to be a huge burden on our traffic situation, and we're already having significant accidents, including one recent death in our community because of the increased traffic. I would ask you to vote no on this allocation. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Yep, up to the podium.
Carl Proll, Tory Street. I guess I just had a quick question. The developer said that they were proposing affordable rents, a lot of talk of affordable housing, but then there was a comment that affordable housing would be what the market could bear. And I really would like to know what kind of price range we're talking about when we talk affordable housing, since we already know low-income members of our community, which is 45% of our community, cannot afford housing rents as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, and if, Peter, if you want to answer that, that would be great. I think you said 80% of median.
Yes, yeah, no, I, I'd like, I can, you know, because it is complicated and confusing, and I don't want anybody to leave confused on this. So the, these funds that we are applying for to the state, which require, actually, again, the 60% of area median income is what the rules around tax credit housing have always have been for the last 35 years. In recent years, they allowed up to 80%, which is a defined affordable number, 80% of area median income, but the overall project, so the 36 units, would have to have an average income of 60% AMI. So that means that there are, there will be units that reach down to 30% AMI, some units will be at 60% AMI, and some are allowed to go up as much as 80% AMI. And so it's a very good question. So what I meant to convey about the market rents is the rent limits for a 60%, for today, a 60% AMI one-bedroom rental that is allowed at 60% is $1,200 a month, okay? What I was saying is, is there's a lot, there's such low inventory of one-bedroom apartments currently in the area that you may well find on the market a $1,200 one-bedroom, but it wouldn't have, you know, the latest green design, elevator, bike storage, and amenities, and be, you know, a new building. So that's, that's where it can be kind of confusing. When I mention, it's a challenge Western Mass faces when developing affordable housing is just that the local market rents for what is available is very close to the 60% AMI rents that the federal government allows us to charge. Whereas if you're in a place like Cambridge or Boston, the market rent might be $3,500 and the tax credit rent might be $1,200.
Any other questions before we have a motion? Any, oh, looks like we might have one more. And while we wait, Julie, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, thank you, it's Julie again. I just have a question. So we know, we talk about CPA, that's tax homeowners' money, okay? We're paying, we just got our real estate taxes, they went up sky-high, a lot of us are panicking over this, okay? So when we give $100,000, that's a lot of money, and we need to look at it carefully. But my question is, with this $100,000 and with all of this housing building, what is the study for the resources that are gonna be needed for all of these housing? I'm talking government facilities, I'm talking first responders, we have never gotten an answer. Is that money gonna be covered by the grants? By, how is this, how are we gonna pay for this? And can you guarantee that the homeowners are not gonna be picking up the tab on all of these resources? So when we give $100,000, you say, oh, that's not that much money, but it is to a homeowner who could really use that money right now because they're struggling. I'm telling you, they're struggling out there. So we're helping everybody else, but what are you gonna do for the homeowners? What has been done for us to make sure that we don't lose our own houses while we're building houses for other people, before we start giving away a lot of money? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question, is 60%?
Just make sure, state your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Darlene Norvieto, Mother Street. Is 60% AMI the lowest you would charge?
No, the, so in this competitive funding round at the state, there's requirements that you have, I think it's written currently 16% of the units to be below 30% AMI or for what are, you know, homeless or at-risk-of-homeless folks. So that there is, again, you know, there's a lot of different levels of homeless, right? And there's tremendous, you know, even family homelessness that are, that people are facing. So there are proposed, in this development, rental subsidies, both, there's, there are four units to be set aside for veterans and homeless veterans, and that will be operated and selected and serviced through Soldier On. And then those are funded with a VASH voucher, which is like a, similar to just a housing voucher that is focused for veterans. And then there is, the application includes Massachusetts Rental Voucher Program, which is another form of subsidy that goes directly to the, to the tenant to pay the rent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So it'd be a mix, yeah.
Okay, so there are other intentions as far as charging, what you're gonna charge for this unit. So is that laid out anywhere in stone, or it seems like there has been a consistent pattern of saying one thing and then doing another, saying one thing and then coming back to ask for more, and you're grinning, but I think Julie has a great point. And I think that, you know, I really think that there should be sort of hammered in there, what, what really is this gonna look like? I don't think you should be giving the money at all because I don't think you need help making money. And I wish the CPA council would consider strongly what was presented by Kathy, but which, also Julie, and it's just, you know, if one thing was said in the past, now one thing's being done, it just, I don't know, it just, consider that. Thank you.
And I think that probably does it for public questions. Counselor Peak, let's get a motion on the table.
Sure, I'll make the following request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $100,000 to be appropriated from CPA fund, undesignated fund balance, $100,000 to be appropriated to Tasty Top Affordable Housing, $100,000. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose: for the building of 36 affordable housing units in Phase One of a 34-acre mixed-use development.
Second, we have a motion, the second, any further discussion on the motion? And it looks like Counselor Denham, and then we'll go to Counselor Kuzinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I can't, I can't speak to the integrity of the, of the company, right? Like, they're presenting us with information and I can only assume good intent that they're gonna follow through with the things that they are. going to follow through with the things that they are saying. I will say that I am going to support this because the reality is, is that we have families in East Hampton right now that are in housing situations where we have outside buyers coming in and jacking up rents in this community right now by sometimes 40%. And those individuals are having to find other housing options because they can no longer afford that. And so I'm hoping that with all of these developments that are coming around affordable housing, that we can ease some of the tension of people who are feeling housing insecure right now. And, you know, we have a responsibility to those individuals as well. And so, you know, I'm going to support this today because I'm thinking about those individuals and their desire to be able to stay in this community.
Thank you, Counselor Denham. Any other counselors? Counselor Kuzinski?
It certainly gives me pause to think that we have people who need housing and around the streets, and it also gives me pause to think that homeowners who are struggling to pay their fair share are struggling to pay their fair share and want to see that every dollar is used to the best of its ability. That being said, I recognize fully, and I hope the public understands, the intricate system that we have to develop housing for those who need housing and the funding mechanisms that are in place. Those mechanisms, without those mechanisms, there would not be any housing. The rates would be even higher, they will stay higher and go, they're already going high, they're going to be higher. Without that $100,000 leverage to get the state grants and the state and federal tax credits, we would have no project. We're looking for, I think, the lowest possible contribution that looks reasonable to the state and gets the project through. I think my fellow counselors would agree with that. That's why tonight I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so, you know, similar to, you know, what some other counselors have said, you know, I certainly have my reservations about giving $100,000 of community funding to a developer that is going to make several million dollars off of this project, much to the chagrin of the public who didn't want the project to begin with. However, this is the best situation that we can hope for with the, the current state of the housing industry. There are so many reforms that need to occur at the federal level and at the state level in order for affordable housing to actually be affordable, right? So I want to be clear that affordable housing in the context that we're talking about is a legal definition that is a calculation based on the area median income of the Springfield metropolitan area. It is not actually affordable in the sense that people can afford to live there for people in East Hampton, right? These are two things that seemingly don't make sense. And it's because HUD uses the term affordable housing as a legal definition. It's not affordable. People in East Hampton cannot sustain building multiple affordable housing units and expect that people in our community who are poor can live in them because they can't. Right now, I believe, unless the numbers have changed, it's about $1,800 for a one-bedroom apartment, right? There's no poor person in East Hampton that can afford to pay $1,800 for a one-bedroom, nor could a single parent with two children afford a three-bedroom apartment that's going to be $2,400 a month. It's not feasible. So recognizing that right now we have no control over that system, this is the best thing that we have at our disposal. What I would ask of the community and of our city counselors is to not just accept this as the status quo, but to start thinking about creative ways to petition the state of Massachusetts to undo the preemption of local rent control. I think this is the one thing that absolutely kills our ability to provide affordable housing for people in East Hampton, is that the state of Massachusetts has laws in place that prevents us from being able to enact actual affordable housing. I think, you know, also engaging in the, in the policy process at the federal level to try to encourage HUD to reconsider what their calculations look like for area median income. There are systemic issues that need to be addressed, and until that happens, we have no choice but to give up $100,000 to support affordable housing developments that may not actually be affordable. So I, I will support this, but I do it reluctantly because the entire system of housing in the United States is broken and it doesn't work anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else on the council? So just, I would say, you know, one thing that I think is interesting to think about, my first year on the council, there was a large project going in on the Southampton border, and we had a proposal in front of us to create an affordable housing trust, where if a development didn't add affordable housing to the development, that they would have to pay into the trust per unit. And myself and Mike Tiskus were the only people that voted for it. It did not pass and no affordable units went into that project. So I think that we're making progress in the fact that we are at least addressing and increasing our affordable housing stock. You know, I think that there are a lot of questions as it relates to, like, what is going to be next, and I'm hoping that we can say, and we can remember this moment, to say that, you know, we would like, if we are going to be adding money to a project like this, we need to have, you know, significant number of affordable units, and if another 35 or something come on, I think that would be great. And this is new growth. And so as new growth happens, that increases the tax base, and as the tax base increases, that lowers the burden for everybody. You know, and I think that there are situations here where we, you know, there could be strains on traffic, but, you know, there's potential to have, you know, more schoolchildren, which we're seeing declining numbers in our school, and that could be really helpful. So I think this is something we've done multiple times before, which is to leverage, for $100,000, we're leveraging 13 million, and that makes a lot of sense. So I will support this. Counselor Peake?
Yeah, one thing I just want to say, without getting too into the weeds, which is always a challenge for me, is we, another thing that's important to note here is that there's, there's a market mechanism that leads to these rent increases, right? It's a situation where there are very few sellers or renters of housing, and there's a lot of buyers or renters of housing. And so, so you're, you're in a situation, your landlord raises your rent, they raise your rent because they know that if you don't accept that and move out, that there's going to be somebody else willing to do it, because there's a lot more people who want to live here than there are open units. There, I am, I don't, I try to not flex this as much as I did in my early years on the council because it's obnoxious, but I am an economic researcher, that's what I do for a living. And there's a good deal of fairly robust scholarship on this topic, that increasing the overall housing supply does help with affordability by bringing the, by reducing the number of bidding wars that prospective renters or buyers find themselves in. And so I completely, I mean, I agree with, with Counselor Riley that, you know, if I could, I would take the entire economics of the housing system in the United States and gut it and change it from the ground up. And like, there's so many things that are fundamentally stupid and unjust with this system, and as a result, we as policymakers and local legislators have to contend with a system that is inherently stupid and unjust, and that often feels like making moral compromises. And we can decide how we want to deal with that with our own consciences. But I do think that fundamentally, it's worth saying that the reason why rents have risen so much in East Hampton is because a whole lot of people want to live here and there aren't very many places for them to live. So giving more places for them to live is going to, maybe that's not going to drop it down so that you're paying the rents that, you know, I did when I moved here in 2007, 2008, 2007. But I do think that it, it, it does potentially slow that process by reducing the number of bidding wars, and even if that doesn't fix everything, I do think it's worth something. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's worth nothing to take some of that strain off the market when the people who are getting affected by that strain the most are the people who are in the toughest situations. So that's me. I'll be supporting it.
Anybody else before we call the motion? Yeah?
I was just wondering if the developer could reiterate the timeline for when these would be available?
I think we have a motion on the table, right?
Yes, we have a motion.
Okay, then I can't ask that.
Yeah, sorry.
Point of information. I think you could answer if we withdrew the motions, et cetera, if you feel your question is that significant. Thank you.
Yeah, we could do that if you wanted to.
Otherwise...
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay, so whoever seconded would have to rescind their second.
I'll rescind the second motion.
And then the motion can be withdrawn. So Counselor Smith, feel free to ask the developer.
Yeah, I'm just listening with Counselor Peake, as following along with everything you were saying, but the one thing that I was really wondering is, okay, we're in a housing crisis right now, and if we were to make this decision in hopes that this would provide more options in East Hampton, I'm wondering if you can tell us the timeline of when that would be available for people to actually try to rent.
Right. Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question, and unfortunately, I'm actually, I was going to look quickly to see, to be consistent, because I don't want to be inconsistent, on what we provided with the CPA application, but I, I'm not going to try to open it right now. So what we, what we have is an application due at the end of February. We, people will learn in the middle of the summer whether they were awarded the money or whether you have to wait until the next round next year to go back in to get the money awarded. So best-case scenario, we would learn that you're awarded the funds in, say, July of this year, and then it would take about six months to put together the bank financing and select all of equity partners, and construction could start as soon as January, and then be about 12 to 16 months of construction. So that puts you, right there, puts you in the middle of 2027. That's the best, that's kind of best-case honest scenario for what it takes to, you know, and it could very easily end up that we aren't awarded and that we go back into either the mini-round in the late summer or have to go into the next winter round, which would be a year from February, a year from now, and that process runs its course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I think we could probably re, put the motion back on.
Do I have to read the whole thing again? Okay, I will. I make the following request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested: $100,000 to be appropriated from CPA Fund, Undesignated Balance $100,000 to be appropriated to Tasty Top Affordable Housing $100,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: for the building of 36 affordable units in Phase 1 of a 34-unit mixed-use development.
Good job. Second.
We have a motion in a second, and I think that probably are, unless I'm wrong...
I just wanted to make one quick point, if I may. And that was, pretty simply occurred to me as we're all talking, that the $100,000, I think the community can look at as an investment, not only for affordable housing and for people, but as an investment that will show a return with the new growth and the future taxes that are going to be paid. So consider it an investment would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Mary Ann?
Tom Peake.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peake.
Do it again.
Motion passes, and I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Sorry, Mary Ann.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peake.
Aye.
Motion passes, the hearing is closing. And I am going to go back to President, Vice President, Communications. I did want to announce that Counselor Jadsik has been appointed to the Appointments Committee and to the Rules and Government Relations Committee, so welcome to those committees. I also wanted to make an announcement that as we have a vacancy at our, in an at-large seat, we are now going to go through the process that we had just similarly gone through for increasing two counselor, which would involve people that are interested, sending a letter of interest to the clerk, and then those would potentially have special meetings where we get to ask questions of the applicants. And then if anybody was here when we did this before, we did a rent choice voting, vote for the applicants. Now, this timeline has not been set yet, we're in the very, this just happened yesterday, so we're just kind of like, but I just wanted to make sure that people knew that this is on the horizon and this is something that we will be addressing shortly. And so that concludes my communications, Vice President, Communications. Counselor Kuzinski?
I am happy to announce that the Winter Fest is coming very soon, this weekend, this Saturday, and for the Nat, the fund's a fundraiser to support the health of the Nashwannic Pond. It's February 8th. It really is a lot of fun. There will be artists and craft vendor show, zing table tennis, juggernaut glass open house, nature hikes and activities, exotic animals and reptiles. Wow! You get to meet the canine officer of the city, Gino, of the East Hampton Police Department, barber shop, quartet, mural making, I could go on and on. Boy, Eddie Popelarsik's going to be there to make balloons for kids and for any other one who'd like to be a kid. So show up this Saturday at the pond.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. And let's move into reports from standing committees. Finance, Counselor Peake?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met last week to discuss the two items that we just discussed in public hearing. It doesn't look like we have any, oh, we also did, we also discussed our city council budget proposal. So I think that that is, yeah, we, do we need to do, we don't need to do a public hearing for that, right?
I think it just goes to the mayor for inclusion in the budget.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think that that meeting has been set forward.
Yes.
For that.
So, so we, we, but we need to vote on it as a council for it to be our, our thing, right?
That's a good question.
It would be, we've always voted on our project before, yes.
I don't know if it needs a public hearing or not.
I don't believe so. No, it'd be like any department.
Yeah.
I would believe so, that it would be submitted to the mayor.
Yes. Counselor Riley?
I just have a question, but I would like to let Counselor Peake finish his thoughts, if you could just come to me afterwards. Thank you.
By all means, I'd actually need to look something up, so if you...
If you want to ask a question now, that'd be fine.
Okay, sure. So, you know, I know we have, you know, a couple of months here before we actually start the, the city budget process. Just this last month, when I was at the Massachusetts Municipal Association 351 Connect event, I was having some conversations with different city councilors across the Commonwealth. And I know we had had this challenge come up before with our committee meetings and having multiple counselors attend. One of the recommendations that was given to us is that because the meeting rooms that we typically meet in... we typically meet in, we all sit at a table, that is, city councilors and the public will sit at a single table, that it can give the appearance of a quorum of city councilors participating in the meeting. So I would just ask that as we go through the budget process at the Finance Committee, if we could schedule those meetings to be inside city council chambers, so that way the committee members sit at the city council bench and then other city councilors who wish to attend would be sitting in the chairs with the publics. That way, there is a visible delineation between who is running the meeting and who is participating as a member of the public. Thank you.
Thank you for that thought. And then, Counselor Peak.
I will keep in mind.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I did find it, and somehow I didn't have a printout for this. So, yes, the budget that we suggested in many ways is quite similar to the budget that we had before.
Yep.
So salaries, we set our sal, the previous council set salaries for this council, so that hasn't changed. Most of the changes that we made were recommend, all the changes we made were recommendations from our city clerk. A $500 increase from $5,000 to $5,500 for advertising. And then the, our legal expense line item would remain the same at 2,000. Education and training would increase from 2,160 to 2,385. I think the justification for that being that that's what it would cost to send everyone to the Mass Municipal Association Conference. Obviously, not everyone goes, but then the additional money could be used for other things that people wanted to do. Excuse me. And then the, our clerical salary would also remain the same, as that's also set by ordinance. So really, it's just, the only increases would be a little bit more for advertising and slightly more to, $200 more to send people to MMA and $500 more for advertising, because the cost of that keeps going up. So that, that's, that's the budget as, as it was recommended by our city clerk, and is recommended is also unanimously by the city council.
Okay, and we can take action on that tonight.
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I would make a motion to recommend that this be the city council budget for fiscal year 26.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Counselor Kuzinski.
I think a lot of it's already defined. One of the questions that I had had to do with the legal expenses.
Sure.
And $2,000, the going rate doesn't go for very many hours, and that really doesn't allow for a situation where the council can independently do its tasks should, I guess the other, the other process would be that the council has to go to the mayor and ask permission for the use of those funds. Otherwise, we would have no independent funds to go ahead. Should there be a difference in the council, how would you begin to override the mayor's vote on, the mayor's in a situation, how do you begin to get legal? I just really question that whole process. I am appreciative that there is some money in the budget and some recognition of this issue, but I'm just wondering if you could comment on the amount and whether it was sufficient to cover the expenses?
I can try.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so it has so far been sufficient for this fiscal year. We'll see how that holds up, but to date, it has been. Now, I think that it's, it's true that it's really easy to foresee a situation where our legal expenses would exceed this, particularly if there were some sort of conflict with the mayor. So your point is well taken. That being said, just with all of the uncertainty currently going on in the world, I think we were reticent to raise anything that we didn't really foresee definitely needing to be raised, even if it is something that like, I agree with you that in an ideal circumstance, like, if I could structure everything myself, the line item for this would be substantially higher and there'd be like a whole, we'd probably have our own solicitor and there'd be like a whole different process to things, which I, you and I have spoken about on this bench a number of times. So I completely agree with you there. It's just, you know, I think this is going to be a year we have to make a bunch of tough decisions, and I don't think we were wanting to go too far out of our way to, to push this issue at this particular time, but I do take your point.
And I would agree with what Counselor Peak says. I think that that, that this is something that we have talked about in the past. I think that it's sufficient for where we are right now, and I think the mayor's office has been generous with us sharing this solicitor and not charging our line item for opinions that affect the city as a whole. So at least that's been my experience. It looks like Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't see this as a particular issue, because if we needed additional funds, we could just do a supplemental appropriation to cover those expenses, so I feel good about the number that's been presented.
Good, thank you. And so we do have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All, oh, Mary Ann, sorry.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Tyrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Motion passes, okay. Anything else, Counselor Peak?
No, I believe that that concludes.
Thank you, and I will take public safety tonight, as, you know, things have changed a little bit. And I will just say that right now, we do have two public hearings coming up. One is for February 19th, which is the citywide speed limit. So that public hearing will be on February 19th at 6:15 in these chambers. So if you're interested in that, you can come and speak at that time. And, and so then there are two other public hearings, which would be March 5th, and that's to the reversing traffic direction on Daly Field and removing Brewster Ave from one-way streets. And we will have further updates for public safety as we manage the filling of the vacant council position. So that concludes public safety appointments. Counselor Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointment Committee last met this Monday, February 3rd, to discuss four new mayoral appointments and to officially onboard Counselor Jadsik to the committee. We were happy to welcome the following appointees. Laura Barley to the Agricultural Commission with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2027. Renee Hill to the Bees Committee with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025. Jackie Brusso Pereira to the East Hampton Housing Authority with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2029. And then Jesse English to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026. So the first update for the council is to inform you that Jackie Brusso Pereira withdrew her application to serve on the East Hampton Housing Authority. She cited an increased responsibilities at work, making it difficult to balance the needs of the housing authority. She did let the committee know that she communicated this withdrawal to the mayor. So in the form of a motion, I request the city council remove Jackie Brusso Pereira's appointment to the East Hampton Housing Authority without prejudice.
Second. Oh, we have a motion in a second to remove Jackie Brusso Pereira from the East Hampton Housing Authority without prejudice. Do we have any further discussion? Zingun, Mary Ann.
JT Tyrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And then next is the appointment of Laura Barley to the Agricultural Commission. Just a quick overview, Laura has been a resident of Western Mass for nine years, three of which have been in East Hampton. She currently works for the State Department of Agricultural Resources and throughout her career has worked on farms and for organizations that serve farms and farmers. She's attended prior meetings and was encouraged to apply by Commissioner Megan Fowler. Laura had expressed concerns and a willingness to focus on the conversion of farmland to developments as a challenge for much of Western Massachusetts and has done extensive work in land inventory to identify and protect farmland assets. The committee recommended her appointment 3 to 0. And then next, we met with Renee Hill, who is being appointed to the Bees Committee. She's been a resident of East Hampton for 28 years and raised her children here. As a hobby, she became an insect photographer and participated in the local art scene, so you can see some of her photos there. This hobby's turned into studying natural resource sciences at Polio Community College with the intent to transfer to UMass Amherst to finish her bachelor's degree. She also noted she's in the process of becoming a certified pollinator steward and also has started attending meetings. She was encouraged to apply by committee member Owen Zarrett, and the Appointment Committee recommended her with a 3-0 vote as well. And then finally, we met with Jesse English to be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member. He's lived in East Hampton for 13 years and his wife is a lifelong resident. In his career, he's served in the Coast Guard and worked for the city of West Springfield as a project manager and both as a project manager and director of Public Works for the town of Ludlow. Currently, he works for the town of Windsor, Connecticut, where he's worked in multiple capacities as an engineer, an operations manager, and now is the director of operations for Public Works. He did say that he spent his career taking care of other people, communities, and now he wanted to take the time to take care of his own, and the committee also recommended his appointment 3-0. Unless there are any questions, I move that the full council appoint Laura Barley to the Agricultural Commission with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2027. Renee Hill to the Bees Committee with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025. And then finally, Jesse English to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Mary Ann.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Tyrell.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Riley?
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to notify the council that the committee has no current appointees before us, so I am freeing up the appointment schedule, so that way my committee members can continue as participants in Counselor Denham's Municipal Leadership Academy. I think it's really important for our city councils members to engage in continuing education. I think this is a really important initiative. So the Appointment Committee is scheduled to meet next on Tuesday, March 4th, at 6:00 PM in Conference Room 2 behind City Council Chambers. And then as a final piece of information, as the chair of appointments, I will be working with the Director of Human Resources and the City Council President and Vice President to start the interview process for our new council clerk and city clerk for the last week of February, and that concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. You do have new business, which is the request to reorganize the Appointment Committee. Would you like to move that?
Yes, that's, thank you. So I move that we send the request to reorganize the Appointment Committee to the, to the Appointment Committee.
Okay. We have a motion, any second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move the reorganization to the Appointment Committee. Mary Ann.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Tyrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes, and.
And officially concludes.
Thank you. Ordinance, Counselor Denham.
I'm actually.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've actually asked, I've actually asked Counselor Smith to give this out, but I just want to give a point of clarification that the Municipal Leadership Academy is in partnership with Counselor Smith and Representative Gomez, so just want to acknowledge that it's a partnership and not mine.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Smith.
Okay, the Ordinance Subcommittee last, last met on January 23rd, where we addressed the shrubbery ordinance and compared our collective notes and photos of areas where we thought that would be considered. And so we've now been waiting for feedback from the Planning Department and the BPW, and we're dividing our responsibilities regarding all the other items. Our next meeting is going to be on February 25th at 6:00 PM in Conference Room 1. And at that meeting, we'll be discussing the zoning amendments that were presented by the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. And last, I just need to extend for 90 days for the moratorium, moratorium, sorry, on sewage ludge.
Okay, so we have a motion to extend, and how many days? 90 days?
90 days, please.
The sewage ludge, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those, all right, I'm sorry. Mary Ann.
Yes, Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Tyrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Anything further, Counselor Smith?
That concludes, thank you.
Thank you. And I will take property as, similar with public safety, you know, we will, as we look to fill this position, we will reorganize and so right now, there is no report for property. And that brings us to Rules and Government Relations.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple of items. One was the rules review, and the Rules Committee met to do so and came up with changes, which were sent to all the councilors for review. Essentially, they were oftentimes grammatical in nature or with regard to changing pronouns, which are important to get correct. There were a few other items that were adjusted meetings. We had had only one meeting in June, July, and August scheduled. However, for the past several years, we've been having more meetings, so maybe it makes sense to put that into the regular schedule. So we would then request that all June meeting, there be twice, we would meet twice regularly in June. Also, we dealt with an issue of extending the deadline for notifying the clerk of the council about any agenda items from 10:00 AM to noon. So we would have until noon on Thursdays prior to the meeting date to be able to submit items for the agenda. Of course, additional items could be submitted with the approval of the president. That generally takes care of the changes, except for the issue of the official website. We were talking about where we publish, and we wanted to be able to be sure that there was some question about whether to have only the website contain publication or notifications of public hearings or also keep posting on our municipal bulletin board. It was felt that we should keep those items on the municipal bulletin board, because not everybody uses the internet. So at this time, we would continue the municipal bulletin board. There is a bulletin board posted outside the building where, where we can see those items. The council, the committee voted 3 to 0 for the new recommendations. I will note that any time a counselor has any proposed rule changes, this is not definitive. The only time we do rules changes, it is throughout the entire year at any time you can do so. So if you have better ideas, we'll consider them. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to entertain any further discussion on the matters? I move to approve the rules changes as described.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Looks like Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge the significance and the importance of the language change around pronouns. I think we live in an incredibly divisive period of time right now, and this is an opportunity for the city council to affirm and support transgendered members of our community and gender not conforming individuals. community and gender not conforming individuals. I think this is an important affirmation and allows for access and equity into our rules and process.
Thank you, Counselor Denham. Any other discussion? I would, I would just echo Counselor Denham's comments, and I, we, this is something that we have done for the ordinance, and, and I think it's something that we should talk to our state rep about looking at MGL, because if you look at Mass General Law, it is really, really full of gendered language, and so that could be potential recommendation from us in the future. Appreciate that. Any further discussion? Mary Ann.
Okay, Felicia Jadzick.
Aye.
J P Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
J T Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Counselor Kuzinski.
The Home Rule Charter Amendment request for defining when the community or the council can approve any increases to the mayor's salary. It was also recommended at that time at the, at the committee level that we discuss any possible reductions in the mayor's salary, since that is not addressed in the current charter. It would be appropriate, I think, to not make any changes once the salary is set and the mayor is going forward to do so. The committee agreed on the language. We would like to submit it to the city attorney. We've gotten our permission from the President to do so, and I hope to be able to report that back later so that we can get that to the legislature.
Thank you.
Regarding our other matter on the agenda, the School Committee request for censure of Counselor Owen Zarrett. I for one am very saddened to lose the services of someone who was as committed to the council as Counselor Zarrett. I also am saddened not to be able to have the opportunity to hear his responses to the, on the merits of the subject. And so I, I'm sorry to say that I will not, I will be removing, requesting a removal of the item from our agenda at this time.
Okay.
In the form of a motion. Without, yeah.
And we have a, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to add that since there's no counselor, there's no reason to entertain any further discussion about a censure at this time. That's the purpose of the removal.
Okay. Mary Ann.
J P Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
J T Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadzick.
Aye.
Motion passes, and it looks like...
While we're still on, on basically the subject, I wanted to say, if I may make a comment about our last meeting, I wanted to thank the counselors who spoke up, and we're all human. We all make mistakes. It happens. I heard Counselor Smith apologize for a mistake. I heard Counselor Riley make an apology at our last meeting, and I heard Counselor Peak. And I am impressed. I am so grateful that folks are able to make mistakes, talk about it, and share it. I think that can bond us together as we recognize our humanity, so I tip my hat to those who look to themselves and say, hey, I made a mistake. Thank you so much, and I hope that helps to heal this council. This concludes.
Counselor Kuzinski, we just have the open meeting law complaint to move into Rules and Government Relations.
Yes. Well, we have an open meeting law complaint. At this time, I'd like to move that to Rules and Government Relations.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mary Ann.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
J T Terrell.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadzick.
Aye.
J P Kuzinski.
Aye.
Motion passes, and we've taken care, we don't have any old business, we've taken care of new business, which brings us to the final piece of our agenda, which is election of the city council president. And so I would entertain a nomination. If anybody would, Counselor Peak.
I'll do it. I would nominate Acting President Salem Derby to be our president going forward. I think you've stepped into this situation admirably, and you have a lot of experience and a lot of perspective and a good temper for resolving the conflicts that inevitably sprout up on, on this body, so I will make that motion.
I will second their motion.
Okay, is there anybody, are there any other nominations?
I would just like to say, I think that Counselor Derby has been around the block as always proceeded with a level head, and that's what we need here. We need someone who is well-balanced and with a level head to be able to take us into the future, and I look forward to that.
Appreciate that. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Mary Ann.
Connie Denham. Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jadzick.
Aye.
J P Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
J T Terrell.
Aye.
Motion passes. Here I am. Thank you. I think that we are going to do a swearing-in really quickly, and then I'm going to swear in the Vice President, and if you, you guys are going to hate me, you're not going to want to vote for me again, but I have just a brief statement to say. So I apologize in advance for that, so, yeah, we can do a swearing-in. Let's do the swearing-in.
You're apologizing.
I've taken, I've taken responsibility.
Okay, repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Salem Derby, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform the duties of City Council President.
Discharge and perform the duties of City Council President.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of East Hampton.
And the city of East Hampton.
Congratulations, President.
Thank you, thank you. And now, all right, Counselor Kuzinski. So let's see if, I haven't done this before, so hey, good job. So I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, James J P Kuzinski, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform the duties of City Council Vice President.
Discharge and perform the duties of City Council Vice President.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to my, best of my knowledge and abilities.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the city of East Hampton.
And the city of East Hampton.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's good to have you here. Thank you. Now, before, before, I'll, I'll read this quickly, but I felt, I felt like I did want to make a statement because, you know, being on the council since 2004, I, I never really wanted to be president until I realized that it might make sense. So I'm deeply honored and humbled to accept the role of President of the East Hampton City Council. Serving the city has been a significant part of my adult life, and I stand here today with immense gratitude for the trust you've placed in me. East Hampton's transformation over the past two decades has been nothing short of remarkable. Through a shared vision, hard work, and collaboration, we've built a city that is thriving, one that people seek out, invest in, and are proud to call home. Today, as we look around at what we've accomplished, we know that East Hampton is a destination. Our journey has been one of perseverance, passion, and partnership. We work to bring new restaurants to our city utilizing overquota licenses to foster a diverse and vibrant dining scene. We've seen the Mill District come alive thanks to collaboration with mill owners, the city and the state, transforming what was once underutilized space into safe, thriving corridor. We connected and illuminated the bike path and wove together the historic and modern elements of East Hampton. And then there's Cottage Street. Once a sleepy, underused commercial area, I remember walking its quiet streets, imagining what it could be. Today, it's a hub of energy and creativity. Any night of the week, you'll struggle to find a place to park. My journey to this moment has not been an easy one. Public service comes with sacrifice. I've missed many family events. My daughter's playing basketball tonight, I'm missing that. My kids' games and performances. I've given thousands of hours to the city because I felt a strong pull to serve. That calling was shaped in part by my mentor and role model, Bob Borchert, a Vietnam veteran and recipient of the Silver Star and Purple Heart, and a man who lived on Goff Street. Bob helped me see East Hampton's potential through a different lens. As a child, I visited him often, growing a fondness for what was a rundown part of town. I saw something else. I saw a cool vaudeville theater, a beautiful pond, and an area waiting to thrive again. I've been so fortunate to be part of East Hampton's Renaissance. I was proud to help connect Kyle and Cassandra of Laudable Productions with our Parks and Rec Director and the mayor to facilitate the use of Millside Park for large music festivals, which gave us Mill Pond Live. Arts and music are not just entertainment, they're the heart of East Hampton's revival. But while we celebrate our achievements, we must also look ahead. Our work is far from over. We must continue to address the challenges of a growing, thriving city, ensuring pedestrian safety, finding traffic calming measures, fostering smart growth, and making affordable housing a reality while maintaining our open space in recreational areas, just to name a few. Almost done. East Hampton's success has never been about one person. It's always been about us working together, listening, compromising, and pushing forward. A city that works together thrives together. So tonight, as I accept this role, I do so with a renewed commitment to the city and to each of you. Let's continue to build a community that welcomes all, that honors its past while embracing its future, and that remains a place where people want to live, work, and create. Thank you, and let's get to work. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.